Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioner meeting for December 20th, 2022. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and the pledge if you all stand.
Let us pray. God, our Father, be coming before you once again, dear God. Lord, thank you in our hearts and minds for how you truly blessed us, how you kept us. Thank you, God, for you watched us and kept us all last night, free from all hurt and danger. Throughout this day, dear God, you allowed us to go through our daily activities, and you're blessed, dear God, to assemble this place once again. Look on this commission board, dear God. Give us the strength and the power and the wisdom and direction, dear God, to handle the issues that come before this board. Well, God, I pray, dear God, upon every household that's represented here tonight, that you bless each and every one, dear God. God, by any attitude, give gratitude. By hate, give love. By confusion, send forth peace. And God, I ask you, on the Father God, that you look on our first responders, look on, dear God, every department, dear God. Every department head, dear God, in the staff. And so we pray, dear God, that you guide this county, dear God, into where you have to go. Dear God, we be able to bring in development and job, dear God, for our constituents and everyone here, dear God, we have a peaceful life here in this county. And God, we pray in Ashwin Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray to the Lord, to the citizens of the United States of America, and to your beloved, which was saved. One nation under God, in the building soul, with liberty, justice, and service.
Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. Good to see all of you. At this time, we'll move along to item number one, December 6, 2022, regular board meeting approval of minutes. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have items 12, 13, and 14. We're going to pull for discussion. So we're going to seek a motion to approve items two through 11, and 15, and 16. Is there any discussion on those items, or do I have a motion to approve?
Some movement, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Item number 12, approval of change order number four with music construction and the amount of $2,866.50 for work associated with wastewater plant. Mr. Mobley.
Yeah, I had called Tori today, and I didn't get the email. I was trying to get the scope of work and itemized bid sheet. I didn't want to agree to approve the payment because I feel like there's potential code violations out there and with a few things, and we want to wait and try to table this till the next meeting and give her time to, for her to give me that information, that'll be fine for me.
Is Tori here?
I am.
Do you want to enlighten us a little bit here?
Sure. Tori at North Florida Professional Services. Leo did call me today. This is work that was done at America's Best Hotel. You guys approved change order number three, I believe, in June of 2022, I think is what I had pulled up. At that time, Mr. Harris spoke to Music about attaching this to his contract to get that hotel online. I think most of you guys outside of the two new ones should remember, we originally got a change order for almost 80 grand from Salzer. Does that sound right?
Something like that.
So...
For a lift station.
For a lift station. That's exactly what this is, except for Rocky Ford. I can't remember the name of his company.
A and B.
Yeah. They did like a retrofit in the existing septic system, and they retrofitted the tank that was there. At that time, my understanding is, based on the information he was given for the hotel and the electrical that was available, it should have been fine, but when he got there to do the work, the electrical was not sufficient.
Did, Mr. Chairman, did y'all do the engineering on it?
No.
Who done that?
This was a retrofit in the middle of construction. I think you guys, I don't know, a couple months' worth. This was the last piece so they could bring that wastewater treatment plant online.
I was just in question because I felt like it should have been added in with the change order number three instead of bringing it in for another change order, just to do the power. And then I have in question the cost related to the service on a 50-amp, $2,866.50, which I know ain't much to a lot of people, but you know, I'm just looking out for the people. But just to run conduit, wire, and one 50-amp breaker about 25 or 30 feet. My other question is, I have a problem with the workmanship of the job for being a possible code violation with it not being a proper depth of at least 18 inches to the backfill of the top of the pipe. I went out there and checked for myself, and it was only three inches deep. And then another thing I was checking in on, I didn't see what a licensed electrician did the job, and I didn't see where they pulled a permit for Swanee County. I was just, my questions I had.
So...
I think, you know, well, I think...
The county did have an inspector on site.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Who I'm assuming, or I know, or I'm assuming approved the work. The work is done.
I wasn't here then.
Yeah, the work is done. I would have to call him to see if the three inches versus 18. This was...
It's basically the depth of a Tic Tac.
I don't really have anything but that.
Pack.
I don't have anything but, the work is done. Music did agree to allow this as an addition to their actual contract so the work can be done, and they were given direction to do it.
So what about the building permit? Who done that? Who would acquire that? Music? No building permit?
For a lift station?
Yeah, for the, to run that service, that 50-amp service for their building.
I would have to find out what was discussed, and I don't know that any of us will ever know.
Well, maybe we can find out. That's all I have.
Well, I think the issue's going to be the person who approved all this is no longer here.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
Uh, Ms. Tori, before you step away, I'm trying to wrap my head around what's being brought up here. I'm just asking, I don't know how this works all the time, but would that be something that the permitting would have been just piggybacked on whatever Music had going on there?
Music, so this portion of this contract is the, you had two parts for the wastewater plant, and you had two parts for the water plant. Salzer handled all of the lines and your transmission and collection, and then Music handled the plants. So as a result of what happened with Salzer, Music also had a contract underneath the same grant, so they agreed to allow this retrofit.
And, and...
No, no, no.
And obviously Rocky Ford and his business did the work for Music. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a roundabout way.
I just think the price don't fit the job. It's what I was looking at. I have a little bit of experience in it, but that's what got me to look at it.
Horse cart, cart horse. I don't really know what to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Ms. Humphries. Tori, um, I don't really, I remember you and I and Greg Bailey had a discussion about this, not this particular item, but the lift station in general. I remember the elevation. Could you refresh, maybe tell us, refresh the board? I don't know that all of them know that, but there was a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, somehow or another, the motel, hotel got, it kind of got missed, so it was kind of like, oh, whoa, this won't, this, we had to have a lift station or something. There was a...
Survey was not done on this entire job. Survey was not done at each of the services, if you will.
Hookups.
The hookups. Survey was not done at all. That was not the direction. That was not included in any of the costs, even prior to NFPS. Survey had been ordered before that by the prior engineer. So when they got out there to do the work, it couldn't gravity back to the manhole. It had to be pumped back to the manhole.
Right.
The hotel could not gravity back, so that's where the lift station comes from, because the hotel would not be able to be on...
The hotel's lower than the line that we're trying to get the wastewater to.
Correct. And where this manhole sits, it's the very beginning of the gravity feed for the whole, for Swanee County's whole system that runs from I-75 back west to the dirt road, back to the first lift station you come to on Dr. Mahatre's property, right there by the wetland. So that's a gravity line that feeds back.
That's just...
And it's at the lowest elevation. It can also be to run that full gravity system.
Right. And if I remember right, when this first, first got everybody's attention, that, oh, the motel can't go up yet, we got to do something here, was kind of the cart, or the train had already left the station, and then we had to get creative, and then that's when the lift station came in at like, a lot higher.
Eighty. It was like 78, $79,000.
And we had to get kind of creative...
Correct.
To make it the numbers what they are now.
They took the existing septic tank or whatever and retrofitted it so that it could be turned into a lift station.
Turned in to be pumped up.
Correct.
To heal to the line.
To be pumped up, to cut the cost in more than half.
Okay. I would just, from my memory, the backstory...
But at that time, what was stated was the power source to...
To run the pumps in the septic.
To run the pumps is not what was found once they got there for that work. It's my understanding.
I guess that, I mean, that's where we're at here is who...
Right. That's where the $2,866.50, that's just for the electrical side.
It was in a building that was only 25 feet away, 30 foot, they, it was right there, 200 amps. I went and looked at it.
Um, they're, they're... Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just, I just, I want to move this along. Mr. Mobley, what you got in mind?
I just felt like the price associated with it, for one, was a little high, but then again, what about the wire not being up to code, man? If, if it don't meet the electrical requirements or whatever the code, you know, I don't know.
Well, can we get, Mr. Scott, can we get Willie or somebody to go out and look at it and see what the problem is?
Get him and Mac, either one of them to go look at it, make sure it meets code.
So can we just, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we just table this?
Table this till the following meeting.
Till further investigation or inspection.
Okay. I have one more question. I mean, so the job is done, and they're hooked up, they're paying customers?
The job is done. The previous administrator's already signed off on the payment, so in my, my view, we're going to pay it one way or the other.
Yeah, I think I would go with that. I mean, however the board sees it, but maybe based on the fact that if it is to code and like the chairman said, it's going to pay, so instead of having to bring it back, maybe if it is, and if it's not, then we got to get it fixed.
Right. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Um, I mean, I agree with, with all three of you that have spoke. At some point, it's got to be paid, I would suspect. However, I would agree with Commissioner Mobley, and I'm always to the point, if one of us needs more time or more, you know, time to do their due diligence or get to a comfort level to where they're okay with it, then I'm always going to side with, let's just table it till that commissioner has time to, to do his stuff. So I do think at the end of the day, we're going to pay it, but you know, if there's some code concerns or lack of permitting, then let's give him some time to...
Is that the consensus of the board, just table this till next meeting?
That's, I'm good with that.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mobley, Mr. Perkins.
And I do want to ask...
But you know, if this, you know, if it's already been signed off on, and of course, I'll make with you about it, make sure everything is right, but you know, 50-amp should be running number six or number eight wire to be able to handle that size breaker. But, you know, what, you know, he had to go in and dig in, unearth that, and I'm not sure what he had to, was it tell him to get the wire from the building over to it if he had to change out any sub panel to put in a, to put in to meet that.
The sub panel right there, that's how deep it is.
Was this, was this pipe here represented here? Is this, is this the conduit or for the electric?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be like in the code book itself.
Well, the code, it, it is 18 if you put it in pipe, or 24 if you have a direct burial wire.
It's in pipe, so it needs to be 18.
Well, I thought you were talking about discharging the pump. The pump discharge, you don't have to bury it, because I think what she was saying, they had to modify, they put in a chopper pump in the, I guess, existing tank that was there, put a chopper pump in there, but getting power to it, and it may be also the alarm, was that including the alarm system to it, because they have alarm system in case this, the system fails, it will activate the alarm to come off, so all that may be in tailing this too. I don't know that's worth about $400.
Well, let's just, I got to move on. I got some time-specific stuff here I got to get to. Can we just get a consensus on this, table to the following meeting?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good?
Sure.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 17, time specific at 5:05 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit for temporary use request number SPTU-22-11-01 by Harriet Wells and Curtis Jeffrey Humphries to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section 14.10 of Swanee County Land Development Regulations for a five-day earth skills educational gathering on property zone A1. Mr. Meeks.
And at this time, if there's anybody that anticipates that they will be giving testimony during the public hearing on this matter, would you please stand to be sworn? All right, just staff. Mr. Meeks, can you swear or affirm the testimony you give this evening before the board to be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this request is for a special permit for temporary use. It's for a five-day earth skills educational event. This is the fourth year that the Earth Skills Group has held this event in O'Brien, Florida. It's on property that is owned by Ms. Harriet Wells and Curtis Jeffrey Humphries. The date of the event for 2023 is scheduled for February 21st and would run through February the 26th. The, a lot of you may be familiar with the event. I don't know if any of you have ever went to it, but we've always gotten positive feedback when they hold these events. But the event deals with a variety of earth skills. They teach blacksmithing, basket building, fire building, there's a variety of different things. They have events for adults and children alike, and they do set up classes throughout those days, and they do a variety of activities with the people. The application went before our planning and zoning board for an advisory decision to the commission at their November 17, 2022 meeting, and the recommendation was for approval. So in your packet, with you have the application and submitted site plans associated with that application, you have a resolution for approval if the board so chooses to approve the request. And I don't have anything else to add on this issue. I'll enter the file into the record. If you have any questions, me, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you. I'll take the, the record file in as composite exhibit number one.
Is there any questions on the staff from the board? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any board discussion at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So...
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Item number 18, at 5:15 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider a development agreement with Project Wave. Mr. Pravat.
Thank you again. Since it is a public hearing, and if you do anticipate giving testimony, anybody who want to be standing, swear at me on this one. All right. Thank you, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give this evening to be the truth, so help you God? Thank you, sir. All right. This particular development agreement is with Project Wave. If you recall, back in October of this year, earlier board, we had before an economic development grant from Mr. Norris's department back there going to Project Wave. The project itself is going to be on approximately 100 acres, adjoining the catalyst site out there. They're going to be building 207,000 square foot building, manufacturing facility, at a cost of about $17 million. And the company anticipates the creation of 50 full-time jobs with an annualized salary of about $37,500. Now, this, those were the requirements that were for the economic grant back in October, and those characteristics of the plan have not changed as we've moved forward in developing this development agreement. If you recall, back in November at one of our board meetings, I presented to you a summary of the terms of this development agreement, which all approved. And what this has done is taken that two-page summary and turned it into a 32-page document, which lawyers are good at doing, and to go through what all the other processes that we will be utilizing in the developmental process. The first thing that is of concern to us is that the company at, on the 100 acres will be granting us a 50-foot easement across the northerly portion of the property, and then extending down the easterly side of the property to reach I-10. This is part of the CV grant that we have received from DEO. I think it's the CV, isn't it? No? It's one of the DEO grants for 1.9 million so that we can extend the water line from the water plant all the way through and then punch under I-10, and it goes across this property. So from our perspective, we're going to be putting a 16-inch line going across there, which they will have access to. We've promised to pay, I mean, for, on their behalf, provide them the water and sewer, I mean, water capacity and fire protection capacity through that main line going across there. The agreement that you have in the format before you, as for the words themselves, this is the final negotiated language between their lawyers and myself. The things that are missing in the packet that you have before you, you have a site plan that's Exhibit A, and then you have another exhibit where it shows the actual line coming across the property. The only difference you will see there is because the original line going across there was going to be a 70-foot easement, and with the adjustments made by their engineers and our engineers, and separating an access road that goes across there, the actual utility easement will only be 50 feet instead of 70 feet. So if you can imagine in your mind that that red line going across there is only 50 feet instead of 70 feet, you should be, you should be good there. The only other missing exhibit is, is of course, the actual description of that 50 feet, because the description we initially had in there was the, was the 50-foot easement. So that's, that's what we get to. Now, the purpose for the hearing here tonight is, it's the first of two required public hearings. So this public hearing is to give us a chance to make comments or any changes that you would like to the language that I have proposed here. And then we'll advertise another public hearing, and everybody will come back on January 3rd for the final public hearing here. I was anticipating having those drawings, you know, the finalized drawings here today, but I didn't, so between now and then, we provided copies of those things, and of course, it'll be available for the public hearing on January 3rd. So I'm asking for comments.
Is, do we need to make a motion on this tonight?
No, sir. No, sir. This is just comment section. You know, if you had a chance to go through it, I provided, you know, the main body of it, you know, a couple weeks ago, and you know, the only things that had really changed since the, the one I provided dealt with the, the line changed actually sizes from 12 inches up to 16 inches, and then the reduction in the size of the necessary easement going across there from 70 feet to, to 50 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Oh, yours isn't colored. I got the pretty one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we put that red line.
Mr. Norris.
That's the red line.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
While Mr. Norris is coming up here, I'd just like to thank Mr. or Commissioner Hale. He's kind of been at the forefront of this project as a representative of the board, and Mr. Norris got a lot of work into this, but lots of times it might have wobbled a little bit, but Commissioner Hale, Mr. Norris was able to, so far, keep it in line. So I just want to thank you and congratulate you for that.
I appreciate that, and I'll just on the heels of that, thank our, our staff and Mr. Pravat, and obviously Mr. Norris as well, and it's, it's been a struggle, but we're getting there, so.
Yeah, and I don't have a lot other than to just confirm what Mr. Pravat said. We have been working and getting closer and closer and closer, and as you get down to the end, sometimes it gets harder and harder and harder the closer you get. But Commissioner Hale and I have worked on this thing for a long time now, and we're getting really close. And our engineers, we did have some conversations, and, and actually, when we were, you know, we were out of town last week, calls were being made, and we were working with our engineer at a table in the middle of a meeting trying to get this, this stuff worked out, but we were able to get the engineers together on a call to get all of the details worked out, and so they're, they're all in agreement, and Ms. Pravat's got that in the document. And it, I mean, I don't know how many, you know, hours we've got on it, but it's been a lot, but we're getting close. This is still, I just want to be sure, this is not the end, but it's, we're getting, we're getting close. So thank you guys for what you're doing, and we're excited, so.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Anybody got anything else to add? So that's all you need just for that, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir. Any comments that we need to, you know, be addressed in the language, you know, going I mean, really, at this point, you know, we have battled back and forth over the last couple of weeks over the i's and the t's in this thing, but the general concept, you know, really hasn't changed in the last month.
Well, and I've been in on those conversations as well, and I think we're, we're getting close, so. So I don't have anything, I don't have a problem with it. Is anybody else? Any, any language you want to change, or?
I'm okay.
Seeing none, we'll move along.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat.
Like you said, expect it back on the agenda for the 3rd.
Okay. Item number, we're going back to the consent agenda at this time. Item number 13, authorization to execute the Department of Environmental Protection's consent order associated with the County Road 136 Water Treatment Plan and authorize clerk's office to issue check in the amount of $8,945. Commissioner Land.
Yes, sir. If, if this, the board and the public remembers this was on our agenda at our last meeting as an additional item, and I had asked for it to be tabled, just so I could gather some more information similar to what Commissioner Mobley was doing on the prior item, and you guys honored me that, and I was just going to share a little bit of what I've discovered. And, you know, I appreciate Mr. Scott's administrative executive summary here. This, this pretty much summarizes it, especially as a miscommunication. I've learned a little bit during this. There was, and correct me if I'm wrong, either Tori or Pravat or Scott, there's DEP, when they go to release this new system, there were two parts, one being the lines had to be cleared, and then the second was the actual water plant being cleared. DEP cleared the lines between county, contractor, everyone involved. We misunderstood that, as is the whole system, including the plant had been cleared. The county, we started the lines and the plant. DEP fined us because they had not actually cleared the plant yet. That fine has been negotiated down from its original balance of $19,645 down to $8,945. And in that $8,945, our wonderful attorney down there is in negotiation with the contractor down there is in negotiation with the contractor about what percentage of that are they willing to pick up. I think that they're at the table for something, we just don't have a pencil on it. So, worst-case scenario, we're looking at all of it without any help. Best case, we're going to get some help from them and dollars, you know, for the fine, as there was an oversight on their part as well. Did I say that pretty close? Is this on?
Close.
All right. Well, I want to be close, so I want to be right.
Part of that fine is for the lack of testing.
On the what?
On the water plant itself. That's where the contractor part of this comes into place. They didn't do all of the testing required in a timely manner. And then, I believe, at the same time, one of the tests, they found something, I don't remember.
Eco, uh, positive.
Yes, and the notice, the bowl water notice wasn't sent out.
Timely.
Timely. It was sent out, but not, I think you have two day, whatever the time limit was, it was just past the time limit. So, it's a, kind of a three-part issue. The plant coming online first, the testing not being sufficient, and then...
But that's why the contractor's at the table, willing to help us, because there's some oversight on their part.
Do you guys, well, I guess he's a subcontractor.
Subcontractor.
Yeah, the one that, E S I.
E S I.
Correct.
Okay. So anyway, that's, that's what I learned, guys. With that being said, I'm okay with it now. I mean, at the end of the day, it's D E P, and we got to pay it. Everybody's got a little bit of fault here, so, I mean, it is what it is. Things happen.
Mr. Chairman. Along the same line, too, that once, once the staff found out about the issues, and D E P told us what to do, they immediately started to work on correcting the items. That's why the reduction was given because of what staff did to make sure, and everybody got on board to get it right. So, just, we, we did, the staff did what they needed to do, and the contractors did what they needed to do to, you know, reduce that. And I appreciate it, because once we make, realize we've made a mistake, and we, or as contractors or whatever, you got to get it right and move on, so they did that.
And this has to be paid by December thirty-first, is that correct? Is there any other comments? Or do I have a motion to approve?
A move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Motion carries five oh. Item number fourteen, authorize Liberty Partners to apply for raise grant or state appropriation request for construction of one hundred and eighty-fourth Street. Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just understanding the, the process here of this grant and what all entails in the grant, and where actually this road is, that would be paved as a rated road, or?
I'm sorry?
The understanding of this, of the process of this grant, and where would be the process of the grant, and what would all entail in this grant.
Well, the grant is to, to go from a dirt road to a paved road that connects Swan County to, to Plumby County. Liberty Partners have agreed with them to write grants, you know, staff, and then we'll discuss what parts we will do, what stuff, parts they will do. Shannon's here, he can, he, and also Liberty Partners here, too, we can ask them any additional information. But basically, we'll task Liberty Partners with finding the resources to get that road paved, and then we will issue documents if we need to to let that happen.
I guess, well, so we will be doing the, the foundation part of it, building, building the road?
No, we hadn't got that part. We got to get the grant first before we can decide if we're going to do the, you're talking about the base work?
Yeah, you were, you were saying, you were saying a minute ago about that.
Well, no, we'll be, we'll be doing whatever work we have to do for the grant writing piece.
Okay.
If we need to.
Mr. Perkins, that's a, that's a pretty big project for our, our people to do that part of that road. It's, it's, actually needs to come up to D O T specs on that road, and so it's not a chip seal road, and it's not, it's not something we can do a lot of work on. It's probably going to be a contracted deal if, if we get awarded the grant.
Get the grants first, and then...
And then figure out the work.
Right. We'll, we'll circle back around, we have to, you know, bid it out, you know, work out the specs, bid it, to get through the, that process.
Good.
This one, this is just to write the grant.
Of course, I am.
Get, get money to pay for it.
Anything else? Yes, excuse me, Mr. Roberts.
Something that might build, Mr. Perkins, is okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, to your question about the kind of the process and things that we follow with grants, I participated in working with several different organizations to write some of these complex grants. This is a federal grant. They typically require significant amount of information. Some of that information will take some work to develop. Liberty Partners, we've had some preliminary discussions about that since the last meeting. We're going to set up a planning session to talk about what's required for it, and understand through the documentation that's put out, all of the information that has to be assembled. So some of the things we, I'd like to be able to tell you today, we just don't know yet because we haven't met about, met with them to do that. But we'll schedule those meetings, we'll have those discussions to understand what information's got to be pulled together, and then us along with them, if, if this goes forward, we'll collaborate to find the best way to write this, to assemble the material, get everything compiled, double-checked, and then, you know, get it, get it submitted in a timely fashion.
While you're there, Mr. Roberts, I understood under that raise grant that it was up to so much money and up to three projects.
Yes, sir. That's, and, and that's something that I think we'd, we should also explore. I happen to try to take the approach to go out and get as much as I can, and I know we have a lot of needs, so there's a real likelihood that they, there are other opportunities we have, and we'll discuss that with Liberty Partners as well, where we could potentially submit up to three and a total of five million per project. So it could be as much as fifteen million dollars for the combined total of three projects, provided we get all the information for each project and spec it out. That's the possibility there. But there's a good bit of work that's got to be done to go identify those things. That one eighty-fourth road project, that is one, but there are others we could potentially put in there.
Is that just dirt to pavement type money, or is that resurfacing, or?
I think, I don't know the full scope of that. I'd really like some time to take a look at that to understand, but I believe we're going to have options where there will be different types of projects that we could include. It just depends on what you want us to explore, but we'll be able to look at this and dig in and come back and say, we can pick any number of opportunities that match this type of work, and then I believe we'll have things that we could plug into that, whether it's dirt to pave, or just reconstruction, or widening. I, I don't, I don't know at, at this time, but I think we're going to have opportunities. We have a lot of needs that can be addressed with funding like this.
Well, also, while you're there, can I say something about the award today? I understand we got awarded a grant today through the state, and I know you did a lot of work on that, and if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, we'd like to hear it.
I, I don't like elaborating on it, but I will. So, we submitted a grant back in August to the Rural Infrastructure. That's part of the Department of Economic Opportunity. We're doing work out on sixty-eighth Terrace for another project that Mr. Norris has been working on, and part of that work requires us to make modifications to a sewer line that connects to a city sewer plant and add in a lift station that's going to bring some much-needed help because of growth that's out there, and it'll support the, the hotel, you know, and, and the stuff that comes from that. So we were awarded a grant for seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and that is a fantastic thing. It's really a joint venture between the city and the county to get that funding, and it benefits, you know, it's got a lot of long-term benefits for, you know, when you invest in economic development like this. And, you know, it takes a lot of work to pull the things together, but, you know, this is one more example of things that we're trying to do to get funding to take care of what we need and make things better for the county and, and ultimately for the city of Live Oak as well. So this one's got a bang for buck in two different directions, so very, very excited to hear the news. I was surprised. I didn't think it would come through that quickly, but I'm, I'm happy about it. Can't wait for the next one.
We're happy, too, and happy with all the staff and all their work on it, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Perkins, did, did I give you enough information?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other follow-ups you might have on that?
That's a good one. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mr. Chairman. Also, along the same lines that Shannon was talking about, the, the raise grant, I've got an email yesterday about trail money that could, that you use for trails and other things, so we'll get creative in how we can use every penny we can get from them.
Great. Any other discussion on item number fourteen? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion, motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Land. We good with that? All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Did I miss anything, anybody?
No, sir.
Oh, yeah. Forgot about that. Item number nine, well, before we get to that, there's some commissioner, under commissioner items before we get to that. Mr. Norris, would you come up for just a minute? But before we get, get to Mr. Norris, just one quick thing that I ran across. Mr. Scott, is there any more, to your knowledge, any more chip seal roads that's scheduled to be done, or is this all of them that we've got approved tonight?
There, I think there's more on the list.
Okay.
That we just want to lock in those numbers. The grant is getting a harder find, so we're going to lock in the pricing so we can move forward. Met with the, the supervisors for Public Works the other day, and they're still working on these roads. We got to address where we are. We don't want to get too far ahead, have to go back and rework them, but the guys have been working hard to get that done.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure, because I had a couple there, and I knew that wasn't in this list, so I was just making sure they were still on the list.
That was in the fifth district, right?
That's correct.
Well...
And you know what I am about a road, so. Thank you, appreciate it. Was it last week we went and done this?
Week before.
Week before, I don't know.
Time flies.
Time flies, but we all attended the Florida Rural Economic Development Summit with Mr. Norris and Carissa that worked in his office, and a real informative thing, but I'll let you take over and, and explain some of what went on.
No.
Not all of it, don't tell it all, but...
Yeah, no, we appreciate you guys being there. It was really neat to have the whole, the gang there. It was the first time at this event that I actually had a Commissioner attend, and we had all five, and we were recognized for that. Called out and actually had picture taken on stage. Y'all probably don't want to see that, but, but I, I do want to thank you guys, because it was several days, and there was a lot of information, and it was real good. I mean, we covered all things economic development. Everything from workforce, the Reach Act, which is going to be a big deal to us, to obviously broadband was a huge discussion. Dr. Jerry Parrish, who's one of my favorites, talked about the economy and the forecast and what it's looking like for us, and some of our fine folks over here at Liberty were down there with us, and actually, Ms. Jennifer was on the panel with, with some of the discussion. But, you know, it was a good event, and a, a few things I wanted to, to point out was, you know, some of the folks there that were presenting gave us some information, and Dr. Jerry Parrish is somebody that I always respect, and, and I bring this up because he talks about the economy, and I thought it was interesting that when we looked at basically pre-COVID in February of twenty, since then to today, basically, the percent change in manufacturing in the state of Florida is up eight point four percent. So if you look at pre-COVID numbers where we were, and then we sank, we're eight point four percent higher than that in manufacturing. So Florida is definitely making a great recovery in the area of manufacturing, which is important for us, because obviously, we're concentrating on that here out at our catalyst site. For the first time since COVID happened, we actually see, because we obviously do, we do tourism as well, as you guys know in our office, this is the first time that we actually see the percentage above where it was on tourism, and it's at point nine percent. So it's almost one percent higher than it was in February of twenty twenty. The leisure and hospitality area have been lagging way behind because it took such a hit with people traveling, and everybody stopped traveling, and, you know, Mickey Mouse was shut down, and the whole state of Florida was in a mess, so. But these are positive numbers. Now, he will go on to share that, you know, more than likely, we are in a recession. We've talked about that before. It's always six months behind before we really know, but I'm pretty sure any day they're going to come out and say that we are. But one thing interesting is, they gave us a chart of talking about manufacturing jobs, and in Swan County, according, according to their numbers, we have one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven manufacturing jobs. Now, that's, that's quite a bit when you look at neighboring counties, and I won't point them out around us, but, you know, four hundred, two hundred, fifty. We've got way more than pretty much anybody, real close to our neighboring county, to the east of us. So that was, that was very positive, since we are concentrating on manufacturing in Swan County. Another thing that we see is that when we look at manufacturing in the state of Florida, it's a seven-point-five-billion-dollar industry. You know, I shouldn't be talking to these guys, y'all heard all this, you know? Seven-point-five billion is what manufacturing is bringing in. Well, in Swan County, we're bringing in eighteen-point-five million is what it's, it's estimated that we're bringing in, and that's by far greater than a lot of the surrounding counties. And especially when you look at rural, and rural counties are, are obviously a little harder than some of these, you know, very highly populated areas. The percent of jobs which are manufacturing, private sector jobs, not government jobs, is eighteen-point-four percent. So eighteen-point-four percent in Swan County is a very high rate as well. The Florida average is four-point-nine. Establishments, basically, they look at our manufacturing facilities, and the average job is seventy-six, so that means we've got some pretty large companies with a lot of employees, which is, is good and bad. We would like to see that number probably down a little bit, but actually, the average amount of manufacturing jobs per establishment, we're the highest in the state of Florida. Also, population change. I know this has come up before, and Mr. Baker had talked about some of this stuff at one of the meetings, when we talked about census numbers and things like that, but seventeen counties in the state of Florida, over the last ten years, have actually lost population. So if you think of sixty-seven counties, seventeen of them have less people in them now than they did. For us, we're at, we had a four-point-six percent increase, right at two thousand additional people, and, one, two, three, four, five, five counties that are basically almost touching us all lost people. So, percentage-wise, for instance, Columbia County's at three-point-two percent, and we're at four-point-six. So percentage-wise, our population increases faster than theirs. That's why all the traffic's in town on Friday, and you can't... So anyway, just a few numbers that I wanted to share. You guys heard it, but for the benefit of the folks sitting out here. Also, we, we had a presentation, and it was on three-D printing, and Commissioner Hale and I were talking, it's just before the meeting, but it was real neat. We have such a housing shortage. There was a great presentation on how they actually go out and they set up three-D printers on site and built the house, and the printer just runs around and around and around, and in, in, in two days, you know, you think about a basic house, a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house, not nothing hugely elaborate, but basically, the machine takes and, and is using concrete, but it's a, it's, it's like a, it's a three-D printer, right? And they set it up, and it's programmed into the design of the house, and it just continues making loops, and what it does is, you know, if this was the thickness of your wall, it makes concrete loops on the outside and on the inside, and then in the middle, there's steel in between it. So it's a very strong, it's a very energy-efficient home, and it's cheaper to build than conventional methods. So they think this may be something that we see moving forward as another new technology. So, they think this may be something that we see moving forward as another new technology. But, as a part of that presentation, what I wanted to mention here was, according to their numbers, 48% since COVID, 48% of home purchases have been in small towns and rural areas, which is a record going back to 2003. And this past year is up 32% from the previous year of people moving to rural. So, when we think about people coming and moving here, we think about the community growing. The numbers continue to support that. A lot of other good stuff. I do, again, want to thank you guys for participating. We got to spend a lot of times with our folks at Liberty and our lobbyist Mike down there, railroad, the power companies. I want to give a shout-out to Swanee Valley Electric. Mike McWaters was on the committee that was talking about broadband, along with a lot of other larger companies. And we sure wish Shannon would have been there with us. Mike got very passionate, and he made it clear that while some of the companies stated that it had to make sense economically to wire a community, they couldn't just go down every dirt road. Literally, guys, Mike pounded on the table and basically said that in Swanee County, no one will be left behind, not one house. That every house, every child has a right to have broadband, and that they were going to promise us that that was going to happen, and I think you guys agree, he got his point across.
Well, and to that point, they're not depending on that grant money. They're fully financed already to do this.
Yes, sir.
So, it's, that says a lot.
And a lot of really deep discussion came out about, are you guys going to block our grants? And why would you block our grants? And that's a whole nother discussion, but these large companies have the ability to block any grant application that is made if they think they might ever come to Swanee County. And that's been a difficult decision, but there's a lot of people working on that, and we fully expect we're going to get blocked, but they are building it regardless. But, but they represented very well, and they were, they were proud we were there supporting them, and we were glad to support Mike and Swanee Valley Electric and what they were doing. So, a little wrap-up from the event. It was, it was three days, and, but good, good, good stuff, and I thank you guys for attending, and I hope you brought back a lot of knowledge you can share.
Some really good keynote speakers, too.
Yeah, great keynote speakers. How many of you remember Stuckey's? Used to be on Interstate? Well, it's a long story, but the daughter of, the owner of Stuckey's now owns Stuckey's again. It was bought out and sold off, and basically, run down to nothing. Well, she got a call to come back and wanted to know if she may want to buy the remaining assets, which were a bunch of ragged-out buildings and factory that make, you know, the pecan logs that made them famous. Well, now, she's reinventing that, that company again. And so, now, these, these, she's hired workers in her hometown, and they're rebuilding that company, and so, they're making a big push to be all through the country, especially in the south. So, you're really going to see Stuckey's and that candy and those pecan logs become prevalent again, and it was a true success story.
And that's in Rens, Georgia, and if, I don't know how many of you's ever been to Rens, Georgia, but it's probably about like O'Brien. So, that manufacturing facility opened back up and started was a pretty good success story for that, that small community.
Yep, it really was. So, one other thing, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Scott. He sent us some information, I guess, several months ago, over to our office, saying that the Florida Association of Counties was having a calendar contest, basically, and they were looking for all the counties to participate. So, he based, not me, he sent it over to Carissa, who handles all that stuff. So, there was about 500, and I forget, 550-plus entries, and they picked 12, and so, I'm proud to say that Swanee County will be on the calendar, June 2023 next year. Picture Carissa took, it's hard to tell from up here, but it's out at Orange Grove Sink at West Gows Park, where all the diving takes place. But, the, we were one of the 12 selected out of all those entries. So, just want to let you guys, keeping his eye out, shot it over to us, and then some, some work on her part, and in 2023, you'll see Swanee County on the Association of Counties calendar. So, hopefully, they send you guys one.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Thank you.
Hale, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, he, we passed that, it got answered, but you just said something, I'll say this one. When I said earlier, thanks to the staff and to Mr. Norris, I did mean Carissa. That's what I meant.
Well, I was going to have some fun with her on that June picture in the calendar, but since she's not here, I won't.
Yeah, but, no, that strictly was all hers. But, but, you know, in a lot of these things, it's just like the grants. You know, these guys down there talked a lot about the grants and the things that are available. If you don't know, you can't participate, right? And so, keeping our eyes open, and when something comes across, shooting it over there to us. Of course, it's then up to us to follow up, but it turned out really nice. So, maybe they'll send us a box, and we can share them with everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Moving on to item number 19, is appointment of annual committee appointments. If you object, I hate it for you. Under Airport, I have Commissioner Perkins, Bill Prang, and Greg Scott. Development Authority Liaison is Don Hale, and myself is alternate. Extension Ag Advisory is Leo Mobley. Fair Board, Leo Mobley and Jason. Insurance Group, Health and Casualty, myself is on that as a non-voting member. The Sheriff, Mr. Greg Scott, Ms. Paula Pennington, and Ms. Betty Lawrence, and Mr. Eddie Hand. He's been selected to take that spot. Libraries, Commissioner Land, Mr. Greg Scott, and Ms. Betty Lawrence. Municipal Relations, Standing Committee, be myself and Travis Land. North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, be Commissioner Perkins. North Florida Economic Development Partnership, be Mr. Hale. Recreation and Parks, be Mr. Land and Mr. Scott. Small County Coalition will be Mr. Perkins, myself, and Greg Scott. Solid Waste, be myself, Greg Scott and Dennis Rafferty, who was the Solid Waste Manager. Swanee River Economic Council is myself. Swanee River Task Force, Mr. Hale. Swanee Valley Transit Authority, Mr. Hale and Mr. Land. Transportation Disadvantage Coordinating Board, Mr. Land. Tourist Development Council is myself, and Mr. Mobley is alternate. Workforce Development, Mr. Perkins. And we got Swanee County Affordable Housing Committee, and this is a new one, I think, is Mr. Perkins. Any complaints?
You said it didn't matter. That's fine. I don't worry.
Item number 20, discussed with possible board action, solid waste decals. Mr. Scott?
I think we discussed this last meeting, and we've got, the staff's got a couple copies of a decal for you to pick from. The letter is prepared, the way the process will work. Chad, you can correct me whenever I mess up. He's the brains behind this. Anyway, the letter will go out, and he's done a great job in looking at who we've missed sending out assessments to, both in fire, and land, and solid waste, and he's collected, you know, they've been able to collect a lot of money. They could go back three years to collect what they missed, if the steward's office is so willing to do that. But, you have, the letter will go out with the decals attached, and so, the process will be a lot smoother, we think, than in the past. But, if you'd like to see which, either we got a round one or a rectangle one, so, we narrowed it down for you, so you wouldn't have as many tablophers to figure out what color they will be, so...
I'll just go down the line. Mr. Perkins, which one do you like?
Oh, the round one.
Round? Mr. Mobley?
Round.
I'm with the round.
I'm round.
Mr. Hale? Mr. Land?
It's four to one, don't matter.
Okay. Still like to have your votes, sir.
I'll take the round.
Five oh. It'll be round there, Mr. Scott.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the job that Shannon, or Chad's done on this project, so, shout-out to you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Chad.
Good job.
Are there any additional agenda items? Seeing none, move on to public concerns and comments. Got any takers? Nobody? Oh, man. Maybe I shouldn't have, I really shouldn't have pushed this button. Mr. Hancock, name and address, please.
I don't want somebody to get up here. On your decals, the static cling, ain't clinging. It's an issue.
Just got to use the right licking mechanism to put it on there.
Ain't no licking on it. You just stick it on your windshield, but it ain't staying.
Scott's...
Just let you know, there, that you might have an issue there.
Appreciate that information.
At least on the first batch. I don't know about this one.
Thank you.
Okdo.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
I forgot to tell you who the head...
Name and address, if you will, before you step down.
Oh, Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, what was I, Mr. Moses, talking about that? If we continue to do this, I know it's a year out, but, and I don't know if we ever talked about it, but I did see in another county, I was talking to someone, I seen it hanging, it's almost like the placard for the, this wheelchair?
Handicap.
Handicap. Moving to something like that, that's more, they can take it down, put it up, take it down. I mean, it's no different, someone said, well, they make you using different vehicles, but you can pull these off and stick them back on, too. So, just...
Well, that was out there behind them, anyway.
Yeah.
So, you can move them around if you have to. Mr. Clipper, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Moses Clipper, 1458100, Second Path Live. I got to doing some looking during that discussion on item 12 there, and, I mean, it's, I ain't been out there and looked at it or nothing, but what I pulled up here, just an average cost to install a 50-amp outlet with a professional electrician is around $525 to $645. What, of course, I ain't the most trusting person in the world, because, probably because I lived a while and seen a bunch of scoundrels out there. And so, I, I didn't hear anything definite. I'm not up there, once again, I ain't up there, but a little bit of my money's up there going out that way, you know? And I'm real concerned. I think this whole thing that's been going on, while we got a new face there, while we got a new face there, I think is maybe this is a tip of iceberg, what's going on my head. I hope some of y'all are thinking the same thing. I actually heard an excuse of why, from one of y'all sitting up here today, why this might have happened. Well, I'm looking at a Tic Tac box that man put up there, that's a little bitty. I know I'm finishing up on a project, got more projects going on. I got on there and lit, I thought I remembered seeing on the application that if you don't get a, he didn't want to hear me when he was sitting up there, but on the application, when you apply, it says on there plainly that if you fail to get a, if you fail to apply for a permit, it's $500 a day fine. And I'm pretty sure the taxpayers wouldn't want to be treated any differently than some of these contractors are being paid, or professional service people. I'm not saying go out and fine them $500 bucks, but if, truly, if they run a circuit under the ground, Mr. Perkins knows plenty well, and I guess Mr. Mobley, you know, two or three inches, let, it's supposed to be 18 inches in the conduit, they're hiding something. So, if it was me, if I was sitting up there, I know what I'd do. I might not get revoted in. I probably would, though, that I would go out and I'd back up. All right? So, y'all want to pay this one? I heard, pay it anyway. No, I wouldn't pay it. I doubt either one of y'all would pay it. If y'all seen a service run to your place that you, you agreed to pay $2,800, then you find out the work may only be worth $645, and then you see the work is substandard, it wasn't inspected, and it's actually a danger or a hazard, that, to me, shows that it's substandard work, and are they trying to do this, and have they done this to prior work? So, anybody that's involved with this number 12 item, I'd back up until I find a project that they hadn't cheated on, and then I would go with that process. And I surely hope my representatives up here today in District One would get, get on board with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clipper.
That goes again.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Mr. Administrator, any comments?
Just wanted a few things to bring up to speed on. The, talk about the grant that Shannon wrote, appreciate his service and work on that. Our dump trucks, we had a recall on the boxes, the pivot pin that some of them had were faulty. So, Shannon got word from the Oxbody, the people who made the box, coordinated with staff to have last Saturday, the guys come in, and it was a contract crew that came in with the company Oxbody, paid for it to get those retrofitted. I swam by on the way back from, we'd been out of town and coming back on Saturday afternoon, and checked on them, they've done a great job with that. Everything went smooth, and I appreciate the coordination that staff did to make that happen. But, we had them all lined up, ready to go, so they could just come in, and there's a mobile welding guy that just knocked them all out. The graders, new graders are in, in the process of looking at what they brought, making sure the checklist is done, making sure that we, what we ordered is what we got. We bringing out our old ones, doing some tweaks on getting those fixed up to send them back. So, we wanted to let you know that.
These are the heavier road graders, right? This is the ones we upsized on?
Yes.
Yeah.
On January 13th, this is a Friday, the West Side delegation will be in town. That'll be Representative Schoeff and Senator Simon be into, do a West Side delegation hearing, that'll be at 3:30 in this facility. So, please mark it on your calendar. We'll be sending a notice out to all the other city, school board, all the other constitutional officers, so they can be aware. For the folks that aren't aware, that's their chance to come and sit and listen to us, what our needs are, what our wants are, has a chance for the public to share their, any concerns or issues that they've got. So, it's a real good chance to be in front of them today. Been in contact with Representative Schoeff the past several weeks, coordinating that, appreciate Mandy's help in facilitating some of that. I got an email, and there's an error in it, as I was texting her to say, you know, you get in contact with them, haven't tweaked. I got an email back that was corrected. She'd already done it before, and that's just kind of staff we've got out at Administration. I really appreciate that.
What was the date on that, Mr. Scott?
January 13th, Friday, 13th.
Friday the 13th.
It's a special day.
9:00 AM.
3:30.
11:30. I'm sorry, 3:30. You got to go to other places first.
Saving all the money for us. I didn't...
Yeah, they go to Hamilton last, but it'll all be gone by the time they get there. But, just a little recap of past couple weeks, sitting in this chair, the opportunity, you know, I found that, I wasn't surprised, but staff, we got some great staff that work for the county. I've been really impressed and pleased with what's happening. You see the evidence of today of the grant that we got awarded, government announced about the $700,000 grant that Shannon talked about earlier. But, throughout the organization, we got great people doing great stuff, and just wanted to, you know, shout-out to those guys that make a difference for all our citizens. So, we'll be looking at all different things. All these change orders, we've changed that policy already, you know, so we, you know, that shouldn't be an issue going forward, but that's internal, and we will handle that differently, and whatever has happened in the past, it is, and we're, our techniques will be a little bit different. So, anyway, any questions for me? Anyway, any questions for me?
I think I missed something here.
Okay, I'll talk slower.
No, I missed something.
Oh, I know you did.
We need to back up to Commissioner Adams, and I need to bring forward Mr. Scott's pay as he is now interim administrator and get board. I think all of you got an email. Did you all look at that from Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I did briefly look over it.
Was there any heartburn over any of that, or, Mr. Perkins, do you want to?
If you can, maybe, hold this, maybe do a workshop, I didn't get a chance to, because I just, I got Greg sent out to me today.
Right.
And then I got another part that you responded, and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at it.
I had responded.
Do you want to do a workshop on it, or do you want to just go and review what he sent out and come back?
Well, I thought we did a workshop, we'd all discuss it, but now we can.
I mean, that's fine with me.
And I need to go back and look it over anyway.
You can discuss it now if you want to, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with that.
Well, I hadn't had a chance to look over the email, which I didn't get until late.
It's only three, it's only three things, and basically I'll just outline it for you. It's gonna be pretty simple. As I understand, salary will be a hundred-and-forty thousand a year, as long as you're interim administrator.
Right.
You will be abiding by the same leave accumulation as every other employee that's within the county.
Right.
And as, as we transition into either a new administrator or a public works director, at that point, Mr. Scott's salary would come up for negotiations again.
For a reduction.
For a reduction.
Just to note that the salary is less than what.
Than what Mr. Harris's was.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn?
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with all of that. And, you know, especially, I think Mr. Scott's okay with that. And I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Scott. Or that previously, that position had no cap on accrual and time. And that's different than every other county employee that we have. So that gave me a little bit of heartburn. I thought that maybe it was, that doing that was a little bad for morale, potentially. And I appreciate Mr. Scott, you know, not expecting that, and going back to the actual, you know, time accrual in the employee policy. The rate of pay at a hundred-and-forty thousand. I mean, I'm okay with that as well. That's less than the previous administrator. And it's still, I mean, that number got there because they combined public works and county administrator into one position. And in this one-page document that we received, he has demonstrated his willingness to renegotiate his salary at a lower number should the county hire a public works director while he is administrator. Which, you know, I appreciate that as well, because he's acknowledging that that, that member of, newly hired member of staff would, should hopefully reduce his workload. So, I mean, in short, there's four little bullet points on this agreement. I mean, I'm okay with all of them. Anyone's got any questions, I would try to answer them, or Mr. Scott or Mr. Pravat on the end as well.
I'm good with it as well.
I'm looking at my phone, because I didn't have a paper copy of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
In case everybody out there's wondering what I'm doing, I'm reading it off my phone.
It's pretty much what the chairman outlined.
Does the public want to comment on this at all? We just need a consensus on that, Mr. Pravat, or? Oh, you got, Mr. Clipper?
If you approve the four points that are here, then authorize something, authorize the chairman to be able to execute after I change this one page into about seven. So.
He charges by the hour.
So, but that would be my directive.
Mr. Clipper, name and address for the record.
Still Moses Clipper, one-four-five-eight-one-hundred, Second Path. Apologize to you, ain't personal.
No issues.
The, I mean, I'm appreciating somebody getting up here, but Harris's salary, what, base salary is one-forty-two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he's got twelve years' experience. Again, I'm up there, or I'm up there thinking, this man's coming to run my company. And I don't, y'all all know more about his background. He's been a parks man for twenty years, I guess?
Thirty-four, and been managing about forty years.
Managing how long?
About forty.
Managing forty years?
Yes, sir.
I missed the park, how long in the parks?
Thirty-four.
Okay.
Thirty-four here.
Okay. Have you ever run a county as a county administrator?
No, sir.
That's my point. Again, not personal. I'd never hire unless maybe I, I don't even know, I don't think I would, even if I had no other choice, I'd probably do it myself. Before, I mean, I couldn't with good conscience, especially when I'm using other people's money, hire somebody at the outgoing rate of at least a twelve-year experience guy. All right, now questionable how well he did it. We're probably finding out some of it now, how well he didn't. But still, object to the man getting the same salary, two thousand dollars. Does he deserve something for stepping up, of course? But, you know, just taking and basically giving him Mr. Harris's salary, I don't think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and defend Mr. Scott, and I realize you might not like it. But he's very capable of running this county. If I didn't think so, I wouldn't, wouldn't have sat here and let it happen. He's got a wealth of experience, wealth of grant knowledge, wealth of dealing with employees, and I have a lot of confidence in what will happen here. And I think you will see as we go on how well that will turn out. So I'm all, and I get it, some of you may think, well, why are you paying him the same thing, basically the same thing you pay Mr. Harris? Well, the job ain't got no easier. And Mr. Scott came to the table, and he agreed to take what every other employee takes on leave. And he took a little less than Mr. Harris was getting, and I thought it was, I thought it was pretty good that he stepped up and took the bull by the horns and took this job. Because I don't know if I'd have took it. So I'm gonna just leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
I appreciate Mr. Clipper's comments, and albeit I would agree with some of them, but I would disagree with a couple of them, and I'll explain why. Mr. Scott has been Parks and Rec's director for how long?
Thirty-four years.
Thirty-four years? And I would put our Parks and Rec department up against any of them in the state as far as how that department is ran, our facilities. I got an eight-year-old little boy, and those baseball fields are the best that we've been to in five surrounding counties. The facility is, are always impeccably clean. How many staff members do you have?
Around, Park goes, about seven.
Altogether, Parks and Rec?
Have to ask, have to ask the Parks and Recreation Director, I'm not sure.
Ballpark it.
Twelve full-time, thirty or forty or fifty, part-time season.
Okay, we'll call it sixty-two. So roughly sixty-two, and he's, he's, all this is public information. Mr. Scott was making approximately a hundred-and-six thousand. And he left that to take on, how many county employees?
I haven't found out yet.
He's still counting. He did it with relatively short notice, and I think that, that the job that he's done at Parks and Rec with the grants, I mean, we're putting in boat ramps and fields and working on now, trying to add on to the backside of Sportsplex with acres we got there.
Also took over Brantford's.
Took, just took over Brant, I see the Brantford folks here. I was wondering why they're here, causing trouble, or if they're just here to watch, but, anyway, they're here. And we just, he just took those over and has tackled on that task. Now Mr. Furries got to fill those shoes, and I think there's some big shoes to fill. And going from one-oh-six to this, the workload probably more than tripled. And to incentivize him to do that, I think that it's money well spent, and I think he's gonna earn it.
Yeah.
Just a side note, too, I've spent ten years volunteering at the airport. I work on a three-million-dollar job now there, so we had that on the plate, too, without additional compensation for years, taking it from the team.
Mr. Doris?
I appreciate you guys considering this, and obviously Mr. Scott stepping up. When I came to work for the county, the very first person that reached out to me was Mr. Scott. He called me the most. He sat down. He's been the most trustworthy person I've ever worked with. He has introduced me to numerous people. Nobody I respect more. And he might not have been sitting in that seat, but I've seen the seats he has sat in. And not just in this organization, through the county, through civic organizations, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club. He always leads by example. There's not a person here that can say one bad thing about the guy, okay? And yeah, he and I are friends, but on a professional level, doesn't get any more professional. We talked about the airport, that didn't come up. I can tell you previously, when people were coming in, we were kind of struggling to kind of work with that. I can show you an example of Project Wave that we just voted as developers' agreement on, that we got with Mr. Scott. Those people flew in, a whole group of them. He called, they tracked the plane literally. I got text messages saying they're coming in, they're over Valdosta, they just hit the Georgia line. We go out to the airport, they fly in, his team goes out, rolls out the rig carpet. They have courtesy cars sitting there for them, welcome them, line them up. And literally, the company was like, we have never been treated this way before. That didn't happen before this young man got over there to the airport. I believe leadership is something that is hard to find, and I believe when you see it, you know it. And I know I see leader in that man and what he can do. And personally, I wouldn't do it for that amount of money, so he is definitely taking one for the team. You guys know what's all sitting out there. We got a little taste of a lot of it the other night, so there's a lot of work to be done, and we got a lot of exciting things here, but my vote, a hundred percent, any day, anytime, any week.
Thank you, Mr. Doris.
I was looking well. I appreciate you as well. I know I stepped to you short notice, and it sparked my, you know, the guys to this point, but I appreciate you. Stepping in and looking out for us, man. I appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Perkins.
I didn't have a chance to look it over, but thanks to Mr. Pravat and Mr. Scott here, that I did get a chance to look at it. And I know I've been knowing Greg a long time, and I know he's gonna do his best, and he has been doing his best. Every time I went to go over and answer things for me, but I was just only concerned about, I didn't have a chance to look it over to be fair to him and anyone else. And I don't have a problem with it, and I think it was noble of him that he's gonna agree to drop his price if his salary, if need be. They just speak for the person he is. I know one thing is, I know Mr. Clipper said about a hundred-and-forty thousand, and the same, about the same as Randy's, Mr. Harris was. I know that that was something that people did say that he was making too much money, Mr. Harris was, so. Be prepared to give, they'll say the same thing about you, you know, so. Now they get a chance to look it over here when I didn't, but thank you, Mr. Pravat.
Were you able to get through it, Mr. Perkins? Are you okay with it? I mean, with what you read?
Yeah, I had a look at it, and then he sure was so out, because I had, wasn't able to, once I got this thing, is what I was able to look at.
Well, and we're trying to be open and honest and transparent in all this, so, you know, I don't have a problem spitting it out there, and that's where we're at, and would appreciate your support on it.
Yeah, like I said, everybody will re-assess.
Mr. Meeks? Just to kind of add in there, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, we get emails periodically through different counties, looking for county administrators and city managers. And to be honest with you, that rate is on the bottom side from these emails we get. But just kind of knowing what that job requires is certainly warranted. And as far as the experience the man has, it's second to none. You know, even before Mr. Scott took the position, as Jimmy had said before, he's somebody that I relied on as a mentor to me. I've been with this county for twenty-four years, but I think we all get to the point where we gotta have somebody to bounce ideas off of, and somebody to kind of let cooler heads prevail in different situations, and Mr. Scott was always one of those people that I looked at in situations like that. So as far as knowing what the job will entail, I believe that it's certainly warranted.
Thank you, sir. What do we need to do, Mr. Pravat?
Got one more, what was?
I'm sorry. Ms. Betty, how are you?
Betty, I'll see you with me.
I'm good. Thank you. I sat there because I thought, well, I'm a staff member, so they may not necessarily want me to come up and testify.
You're also a taxpayer, ain't you?
I am.
Alrighty.
So thank you. I've been with the county now for eleven or twelve years, and when I came, Greg was one of the first people that said, if you ever need me, if you ever need anything, let me know. Now, some people will say that, but then you march with them for a little while, and they begin to hang back. He never did. I do three counties, and I tell you, with his help is how I've been successful. And you can check any of those boards, and they will tell you that they're pleased with what happens over there. So I don't want to be emotional, but sometimes you lead in a way other people may not hear a horn blowing all the time, but you need to take a look at what they've done. And I'm gonna say that.
Appreciate you, Ms. Betty. Thank you. Chief Hen?
And to add on to what Mr. Meeks said, you know, I've been a county employee for almost twenty-five years, and, but only became a department head, you know, three and a half years ago. Greg's been, has been the mentor for me to bounce ideas off of over the years, because he's had so much experience in dealing with county business, and the boards, and the grants, and the different things. And like he said, when you see these emails from different county organizations and stuff, the salaries of just a county administrator, that's on the bottom side of it. So I think he definitely, he's already proven to me in the first couple of weeks with the conversations that we had, type of leader he's gonna be. He's gonna expect us to do our job, but let us do our job. And that's all we can ask for as employees. And I think he would be a great, a great choice.
Thank you.
Mr. Hancock, just. Me again.
Name and address, please, sir.
You didn't make them do that.
I, yeah, I did.
No, you didn't. You just called.
Well, I'll do it when they come back.
Bo Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five Wiggins Road. Now, I forgot what the head of law is gonna say.
See it work.
No. I've been attending county commission meetings since the mid-nineties, early nineties. Greg's been here that whole time. And I've probably had more conversations with him than I've had with any county commissioner. We've talked before meetings and after meetings. He's never, ever backed off from an issue that he believes strongly in. But he believes in this county, after thirty-four years of serving this county. I think he's the best choice you can make, and you're dead gum lucky to get him. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna just add to that and say, I know he's up for retirement, and it's probably gonna come down to, you're gonna hate to see him leave when he's. And it's probably gonna come down to, you're gonna hate to see him leave when he's gotta leave. It's about how I feel about it. So, that's, that's, uh, that's what I'm going with, and I'm gonna stick with it. Mr. Moses, is it some more to do with this? Or, you've been up twice. Do you want, go ahead, let's hear it.
Still Moses Clepper, 1458102 Pat. I've looked on several locations, Tampa, bigger than here. Orlando, bigger than here. Base salary, and this is November 23rd, 2022. Base salary for county commissioner ranges from 100, 1,000 to 115,300.
Commissioner or?
County Administrator.
Administrator?
And then down in Miami, uh, also on November 23rd. This is on salary.com, anyone want to verify. Salary range typically between 103,000, and I don't have the site open. Gainesville, Florida, I've done all of them in Florida. Is, uh, salary in Gainesville is 102,500. Yeah, so.
Okay, it looks up Public Works Directors also, and add that in on top of that.
Well, that's true. That is true. I, I didn't look that up. I just.
We'll do that.
The, uh, argument that it, it's on the low, though, 140's on the low for administrators, not true. That's what I want to add.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I hadn't commented on this, but, um, I agree, I think Ms. Betty said it. When I first became a commissioner, Mr. Scott was probably one of the first ones to reach out to me. Offered his services and his, his knowledge and his years of experience. And he's continued to do that. Hours and hours on the phone, conversations. And, and he has a lot of knowledge. There's things that were outside of his department that I would call him on that may be on this agenda. So, uh, anyhow, and, and I agree with Mr. Beau. You add those two together, I, I don't think, you know, the, the numbers are right there. But then you take away, like Travis said, taking away the, Commissioner Lynch, I say, taking away the, um, the, the paid leave and stuff like that, there's a dollar figure on that, too.
Big one.
To take into consideration. So, you know, I think it's a starting point to get us to whatever our final point is. So, that's my thought.
Sheriff.
Give you my two cents here while everybody else is. But no, I, I appreciate Greg, you know, our paths crossed time to time and all. And, uh, and what, uh, kind of, just when he was, you know, put in that position, you know, he called all the constitutional officers, you know, together. We had a meeting, and a real good meeting and all, and, and I appreciate that. But even in the past, you know, uh, you know, I've had to call Greg several times on different, different situations and all. And I always answer his phone, right, he'd always call, call me back. And that means a lot to me, uh, you know, for someone to do that, even on Saturdays and Sundays. So, uh, here again, no, no bad experience with Mr. Greg. He's always been, been a good friend and, and always, always true to his word. And, and, uh, very, very, uh, willing to work with you. But, so I, I think he's a good, good man for the job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I would add that in the Lake City Reporter Day, I believe it's the front page, that the city of Lake City is negotiating with their, with their city manager at the rate of 160,000 a year. That's in the paper today. I mean, they're still going back and forth, but the number up for the city of, not Clement County, but the city of Lake City is 160 grand. So I don't know what Tampa and them other cats are doing down there. But, uh, up here, apparently, it's higher.
Again, Mr. Pravat, where I need to go with this?
Well, I mean, one to approve the, you know, the four points that we'd have here. Uh, one of the things in here, though, it talks about being named, taking the interim tag off. So, the, that would be the first thing that you would really, you know, do is take the interim tag off and then approve these other items. And then I can draft up an agreement that we can come back with. I'll work with Mr. Scott to work on those terms. And we'll, we can work along, you know, on the 140,000 for compensation during, you know, during the meantime right here. And then, uh, actually just bring it back for formal signature on the 3rd.
Okay, so you don't really need anything from us tonight? Other than taking off the interim?
Taking off the interim.
Off the interim and making him full-time county administrator?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, and second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Pravat?
Thank you, sirs. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, if I understood Mr. Pravat right, he's going to?
Bring back another document.
Bring that back in an official document based on those consensus bullet points?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We got through you. Did, did you finish up, Mr. Scott, with your comments?
One thing I didn't mention is that the other day, that Mr. Lynn and I had a chance to go out to the library on their training day. We got a chance to see the people at the library that do the work of the three counties. Great group of people, appreciate the chance to get there and just speaking to them for a few minutes. But, um, that's, I've always heard Ms. Betty and Danny in the past talking about training days and that kind of thing. I was quite impressed in what she, what she does out there for that day. I would encourage you, others to go and get a chance.
I need some training. I said I need some training. You said it was Training Day, right? I probably need some. Was that it, me, Mr. Hancock? Okay.
It was on cue, though, wasn't it?
I was making sure, I wasn't getting corrected over there. Hey, Mr. Pravat, any comments, closing comments?
No, sir, not deceiving.
Mr. Perkins?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Scott, for taking that position, taking that role on. And, and you did, too, uh, extend all, all the branch out to me when we first got this position. And two, just to, uh, say to everyone, uh, happy Merry Christmas to everyone. And stay safe and look forward to seeing about a new year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mobley? You good?
Thank you, Mr. Scott, very much.
Commissioner Lynn?
Um, yeah, I, I got a little bit. Mr., I'm gonna, to start off on the latter side, Mr. Norris mentioned that, uh, a lot of counties in our area are decreasing in population. I don't know about Commissioner Hale, but I would probably say that Lottaw County is, is shrinking due to the Gators unable to pull off a win.
Twice now. We haven't had a chance to address that.
I'd love to call you down on that one.
All right. Just thought I'd point that out. Maybe those folks are moving up here.
You're out of order, Mr. Lee.
Moving to Leon County. Anyway, but no, great job on the grant, 764,000. Mr. Scott, Shannon, staff, um, thank y'all for that. Mr. Hayward Jelks, I don't know if many of y'all know him, but I grew up across the street from him. He turned 80 just the other day. His family threw him a nice party out at the Coliseum, very nice. He's a, he's a fine fella.
Yes, great family, too. Good people, good people.
Good people.
Good people.
Good people. Ms. Betty, Mr. Greg and I, Mr. Scott and I, attended her, uh, staff development day. That was a great success. She's got a lot of good people. She runs a great library. I appreciate her. I think Mr. Scott left one other thing off, and it, it was in regard to item number three on our agenda. And he's in the building here. I just wanted to crack, congratulate Mr. Fury. Jason, you'll stand up. 29 years. 29 years under Mr. Scott. I, I think he may be a little disappointed that you didn't come to the microphone.
He didn't want, he didn't want me to go back.
I just want to congratulate, I want to.
It felt a little awkward that, you know, I benefited from that, so I, you know.
I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And looking forward for what you're gonna do. You know, you got some big shoes to fill over there. But I'm sure that you've been well-trained and, and we're looking forward, you know, to working with you.
And thank you. We have a couple of rec board members in the audience tonight. President and Vice President, Mr. Jeff Lee and Mr. Robert Ford. So, thank y'all for your faith in me, and, uh, thank you guys for your support and look forward to it as well.
All right, we appreciate you.
I'm gonna talk to you about a boat ramp.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee, y'all want something, y'all want to get up and speak, or what? I was just kidding. I really was hoping you would.
Put him on the spot, he'll go stutter.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jeff Lee, 8841141st Drive, Live Oak, Florida, 32060. For Mr. Hayward.
That's right.
I'd be remiss, really. Uh, I've been on the, or have been, have the pleasure of serving on the rec board for the almost 20 years, if not more. And, uh, I've been the, um, president for the last 10 years. And, um, y'all made, in your position, you, you make a lot of difficult decisions. This is not a difficult decision that y'all made tonight. I mean, this guy right here is a slam dunk. It's, uh, I've been in Swanee County for 25 years, 26 years. And I've leaned on him for the past 22 years. And, uh, he's been a rock here. He knows what he's doing. And, uh, y'all made a right choice in picking him. And in my personal opinion, you're not paying him enough. But, uh, I appreciate y'all's, um, insight into, uh, picking him and, and allowing him to, to serve our county, and he's gonna do it well. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Appreciate that, Mr. Lee.
Um, and to wrap up my comments, I would just, uh, tell the public and staff Merry Christmas. You know, don't forget the reason for the season. Santa Claus was here earlier, but I'm lucky he's coming back. But, um, you know, do something kind for someone less fortunate.
I just like that look better.
Like George Washington.
Yeah. While, while Santa Claus is getting dressed, I'll go.
Go ahead, I'm done.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to everybody and staff and, and Shannon and everything you guys have got going on out there. Mr. Scott for stepping up and, um, you know, Mr. Travis here said it. Commissioner Lynn, it is the, the real reason of the season. We don't need to forget that. None of us will be here without Jesus Christ, and, uh, we don't need to forget that. So, that's all I want to say, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'll just keep it short and sweet. Appreciate you taking up the position there, Mr. Scott. Appreciate all the kind words for you. I know I got my Santa Claus little thing on here, but I was, uh, I'm usually the Santa Claus for the town of Brantford every year when they have their Christmas for the last, I don't know, three years, I guess, now. But I had it in the truck, so I thought it'd be kind of cute to put it on tonight. So, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, uh, and a Happy New Year. And I hope everybody gets by okay. So that, I just need a motion to dismiss.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?